Good evening, everybody. Calling the meeting to order is a meeting of the Arlington Select Board. It is November 14th, 2018. It is just after 7:15 and we are in the Select Board chambers. All the way to my right is Selectman John Heard. Directly to my right is Selectman Joe Kuro. I am Selectman Dan Dunn. To my left is Selectwoman Diane Mahon. Selectman Kevin Greeley, his flight was canceled and he's on a second flight and so he may or may not be joining us later. We're also joined by Town Manager Adam Chapdolane, Town Council Doug Heim, and Board Administrator Marie Kropelka. As is sometimes the custom, I can start the meeting with a quote and with the weather forecast, I will quote E.E. Cummings, "The snow doesn't give a soft white dam who it touches." All right. First item on the agenda, to review and approve the maximum useful life of nine fiscal FY 2019 capital asset purchases, the sale of 5.55 million general obligation bonds, and the sale of 3.135 general obligation bonds and other documents. Our new treasurer, Ms. Phyllis Marshall, welcome.
Thank you very much. We, as you know, we had a ratings call prior to our bond sale and our AAA bond rating was reaffirmed by Standard &amp; Poor's and so we're very proud of that for the strong economic conditions here and the management and flexibility in the budget. So those are accolades that are justly recognized, so that was great. We had a bond sale on the 8th and we received five bids for the 20-year bond. They were very close and so we have a great bid to award. And we had three bids, four bids, for the bands, which are only a year in term, but again, that rate was 2.25. So hopefully you all have any questions for me, that'd be great. Otherwise, I can speak to the borrowing.
I'll move approval and I have just one question.
Second.
I'm not sure if the treasurer or the town manager. This is to fund all the capital planning approved requests for this spring 2018. It says with the exception of the $375,000 for the police request, and that will be included in a future bond, is the reason it's not included in this because there was only so much we could put out for bond or is it because maybe the police department or whoever said, "We're not ready to go yet, so wait," or I'm just wondering why it wasn't included? Nothing nefarious, just...
No. And in preparation for all borrowings, one of the things that we do is reach out to the departments to assure that we're borrowing timely so that we aren't borrowing too far ahead of schedule. And that is one element of a series of improvements to be made to the communication system and the police department thought it was best to wait a little bit longer and so it will be borrowed at a future date.
So the vote by town meeting would cover that, that it won't have to go back to the beginning of the queue?
No. Sorry. The borrowing was authorized at town meeting, so it will be authorized but unissued until such time as you vote to issue it.
Thank you.
Chilling, Selectman Greeley. How much money did we save with the AAA bond rating?
I spoke with, sorry, Hilltop and their estimate on our savings with a AAA bond rating versus a AA bond rating is $71,000 a year for the life of the bonds and their 20-year bonds.
Thank you. Yeah. And do you need, is one vote good enough to cover all of them? Okay.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I'll just note that among the many pieces of equipment, we're buying our four-wheel-drive truck with a sander and dump truck with a plow, so we're a little late now, who knew?
All right. On a motion from Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Kuro, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next up, Beer Garden Season End. Ally. Oh, no. Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
So, thank you for having me here. Aeronaut Brewing Company held a total of nine. Yep?
Everybody else doesn't know who you are.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'm Ally Carter, Economic Development Coordinator.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, there were nine beer gardens at Woodmore Park this summer. There were three and a half cancellations due to rain. On the whole, Aeronaut welcomed 7,000 attendees over age 21 and an additional 2,000 roughly minors. According to their beer sales data, beer consumption ranged about one and a half beers per person. We did some surveying online and with postcards in the beer garden to get community response to it. Interesting to me was that 80% of the survey respondents came specifically for the beer garden. 210 of the respondents answered this question, but about how much money they spent that day. Collectively, those 210 respondents spent over $12,000, not at the beer garden. One of the intended outcomes for the beer garden, as set forth in a memo that I wrote to the town manager in June, was to activate underutilized town property with programs and events, which is from the Arts and Culture Action Plan. And I believe the data shows that that intended outcome was achieved. So, just to sum up, the pop-up series was popular and the Department of Planning and Community Development will draft a request for proposals for activations of Woodmore Park on a seasonal basis in the future. So not necessarily the same thing, but similar type activity. But any RFP we put out will clearly outline requirements for security, public safety, waste disposal, other considerations.
Thank you. Mr. Kuro.
Thank you. Thank you for all of this. This is just the type of follow-up we need and Ally and I have been working on the Cultural District Impact Analysis Subcommittee and whatnot, but I'm curious on the survey results. You said 210, in total, 210 survey respondents reported over $12,000 in spending. What was the response rate on the, do you have a sense of the, was that all of the survey respondents reported spending something or only some people answered the question?
Yeah, not everyone answered that question, so just for the people who answered that question.
The reason I ask, I'm just wondering if we can extrapolate because we can assume that then there was quite a bit more than $12,000 that was spent.
Yeah, it averages out to like $55,000, $60,000 a person for those 210 people.
Very good. That's great. That's a big impact. Thank you.
One question. Where it says 50% of attendees arrived by foot, does that mean, are they saying they walked from their houses to get there or is it they were already in the center and walked over?
They didn't say by foot from where, but I imagine they were of local origin because most of the people who answered the questions were Arlington residents.
Yeah. That struck me, is how that so many people live within walking distance of the beer garden, that 50% of the people that were there were using it. But, just as a follow-up, you know, I think this was a, I had a great experience at the beer garden and as I've said many times, I don't want to reiterate it because people will think that I had too much fun at the beer garden, but you did a great job. I'd like to thank you and thank Aeronaut too because I was very impressed with the way that they operated the beer garden and the security and I think they took all of our rules and regulations that we set forth on them very seriously and, you know, I think it was, in the end, a great success as the members show.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahon.
I know there were, I think, three rain dates. How many days actually went forward for the beer garden?
Nine.
Nine?
There were three and a half rain days.
Okay, so are they, and the reason, what I'm getting towards is the fee, which I thought was very, very low. So are we approximating that for each of those nine events, if you go by the survey as a bellwether but not hold to it, it's nine events at somewhere in the range of $12,000 plus or minus? Or are you saying $12,000 for the whole nine dates? In terms of, what it is, is what I read from here is they're saying while they had gross profits overall, they never, they're trying to, I guess, they really didn't make any money because they didn't recoup their startup costs?
Yes, yes.
And I know I heard from a lot of people and I agreed with that, to rent that area exclusively for $400 was, to me, really low. But that what we said was, this is the first year they're doing it and we would certainly revisit that and I don't see that being revisited. Now, do we know, and I would expect the answer is no, they're trying to say, you know, they had made a profit, but then they didn't make a profit because, how much of these startup costs that they supposedly lost, if you know?
Yeah, so they, each event was profitable, but they didn't recoup their startup costs, so the total fees to the town, including like the license fees and the details, were about $6,000. So the series didn't make a profit in total, but each event, they, they pretty much made a profit on a day-to-day basis. But they had a large outlay of cash at the beginning for equipment and rentals and things like that.
Which they won't have next year.
Correct.
And then, am I correct that a majority of their outlay costs is probably police details?
Yeah, I think that was the most expensive single fee.
Yeah, the police details were about $6,000. So the way I'm adding it, they paid $6,400 unless they paid any DPW costs, which I didn't see that. I saw us going down there cleaning, but we didn't get reimbursed for that. So the reason I say that is the discussion, and it would be a majority of the board, in terms of, and I think we should do this, I mean, I couldn't make it just because of personal family circumstances and I was so jealous and envious, one of the commandments you shouldn't break, it's an easy one, because I heard such great things about it and people really had a great time.
Yeah.
So I definitely want the beer garden back, but how do we resolve? I mean, are we saying $400 again for the whole year next year?
No, not at all.
Oh, okay.
May I, Mr. Cheff, please? So I think what we're saying, what we wanted to do is provide the board this wrap-up information for its consideration. The Planning and Community Development Department's going to draft an RFP to come back to show the board. I, you know, I've been talking with Ally and Jenny and I don't think we know exactly what the right amount should be, where my latest thoughts are. If this goes out to a competitive bid, perhaps we set some floor and let Aeronaut and any other bidders for use of the space suggest what the price could be. Perhaps it could be a percentage of profits. I mean, I think we could likely be flexible in the amount, but I think we still need some more time to work through that, put in an RFP, bring it back before the board, before we make any decisions.
Okay. No, it's just where it talked about the $400 and then the very next paragraph talks about how they didn't make, while we made money, we didn't make any money, so. And I think the 400 was, everyone was taking a chance and, you know, no one wanted to place undue burden, but in terms of like the $6,000, the majority of it is for APD, which is kind of like COB, Cost of Doing Business, so I wouldn't, I don't count that in my mind as, we charged them $6,400. We only charged them 400, but you're saying that's fluid and this is just an assessment. Thank you.
Joe.
Yeah, I just wanted to point of clarification because I think Ms. Mahon and I might have read that $12,000 figure differently. Am I correct that that's $12,000 that was spent in surrounding businesses? It's not $12,000 spent at Aeronaut?
That's right. Yes, not what they spent in the beer garden, so there were options to check, like how much did you spend at shops, restaurants, parking, and other? And so the question was meant to gauge how much money was spent outside of the beer garden.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you. I misread that.
So I definitely, I'm really pleased with the report and I definitely, and what we said when we approved this is that we were going to take it and evaluate it for next year and I definitely am happy to support it next year and I definitely, but I agree that there's like, there is another look at what the price is because we said we're going to do this price and then we'll figure it out. So we've got a couple of months to, well, more than a couple of months, but not too long to figure it out.
Move receipt.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion for Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Heard to receive. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four-zero. Thank you very much. Next up, Small Business Saturday. Who the hell are you?
Should I really introduce myself again?
You're fine. I think we figured it out.
Okay, cool. So, thank you. I'll just say a few words if you don't mind.
Please.
And I have gifts. Thank you for your support of the small business community in town. I meet with our local merchants regularly and it means a lot to them to have the backing of the town and the Select Board. In addition to the proclamation, I just wanted to outline a couple of events and activities underway this season to encourage people to shop locally. Arlington has been registered an official Small Business Saturday Neighborhood Champion. That's why we get these. I'll distribute these free reusable shopping bags to businesses in town to share with their customers. There's a "Shop Local First" sign at the new Heights Community Message Board that went up today and some events. The Arlington Chamber of Commerce is having their First Lights Event on Thursday, the 29th of November at 6:00 PM. ACMI is having a tree lighting in Arlington Heights on December 1st and Capital Square is having their First Lights Events on December 1st as well. So, thank you again for your support.
Cool. And so we've got a proclamation even, right? Shall I read it? Whereas the town of Arlington, Massachusetts celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States that represent 99.7% of all business with employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas, 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas, 73% of consumers who reportedly shop small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas, the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently owned businesses was to support their community. And whereas, Arlington, Massachusetts supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Select Board of the town of Arlington, do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018 as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our communities and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. And it is signed by us all. All right.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
May I give these to you?
You can. Yeah.
And you can get the...
I was going to say, Mr. Greeley's not here, so I should get double. No. You can give Mr. Greeley.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll tell Kevin, you missed out on samples.
All right, Ally, anything else on that one?
No.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. Next up, Spy Pond Park Project. We have two proclamations for the Friends of Spy Pond Park and for the Judy Record Conservation Fund. Who do we have from those organizations? Welcome. Thank you very much, Times, for, thank you for being here and thank you so much.
Karen Grossman, President of the Friends of Spy Pond Park.
Excellent. And do we have anybody from the Judy Record Conserv, here? Okay. Well, I'm going to read the Spy Pond Park proclamation. Whereas, the town of Arlington appropriated $646,900 as part of the Spy Pond Park Project Fund Shoreline Stabilization and ADA Compliance Elements. And whereas, the Friends of Spy Pond Park is a nonprofit organization which supports the preservation, enhancement, enjoyment of Spy Pond Park and Spy Pond as natural and community resources. And whereas, the Friends of Spy Pond Park support the ongoing protection and beautification of the park, preservation of open green space and wildlife, prevention and reduction of pond pollution, and use of the park as a community and cultural resource. And whereas, the Friends of Spy Pond Park granted $5,000 towards the Spy Pond Park Project. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Select Board of the town of Arlington, wish to thank the Friends of Spy Pond Park for their generous donation towards the Spy Pond Park Project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our pleasure to help out. We appreciate everything the town does to keep our park looking beautiful.
We have a signed version that's printed out nice, but we're going to wait for Kevin to come in and put his signature on it before we hand it over to you, but Marie will be happy to get it to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move approval?
We have motion, that's for both proclamations, I see. All of those, motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Heard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Consent Agenda. So, as practice, we will cover everything under the Consent Agenda on a single vote unless somebody on the board wants to pull them off and this is a long list, so here we go. Vote to Chapter 268, Section 20B, 3, Contract Certification for Paul Flynn and David Guerra, Reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeal, Roger Dupont and Joseph Moen, Reappointment to the Transportation Advisory Committee of Howard Muse, who's here with us tonight, Request of Contracted Drain Layer License for Joseph P. Cardillo and Sons of Wakefield, Contracted Drain Layer License for Perdonee Brothers of Wellesley, Request for a One-Day Beer and Wine License at the Masons for the ACHS reunion party, Request One Beer and Wine License to Arlington Town Hall for the Arlington High 20th reunion, class of 1988, One-Day Beer and Wine at the Town Hall for Arlington High School 40th reunion, class of 1978, One-Day Beer and Wine at the Robins Library Reading Room for a book launch party of Susan Bernhard, and Appointment of New Election Workers, Merrick Klein Collins, Donna Dolan, Elizabeth Dyer, Maureen Jackson, Ann Jones, Edward Keith, Joseph Lawler, Lisa Rodrick. Is there anybody here from any of those events or any of those appointments who wishes to advertise, talk about wonderful things that are happening at the event?
Move approval?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for your, the volunteers in particular. Next up, Appointments, Commission for Arts and Culture. Kimberly Harding.
I was so excited, a pen jumped out of my hand, sorry.
Welcome. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what has you excited about the committee?
I'm Kimberly Harding and I am very excited to join the commission. I've been on the Arlington Cultural Council and I'm going to be representing that subgroup of the, now called the Grants Committee, on the commission and there's just so much going on in town that's really exciting and it's really wonderful to be part of the commission and to help forward the projects that we are all working so hard to create.
What was your nickname for the committee?
Kimberly Harding.
No, you said you just, you called the committee something, you said...
The, so, the, I am, the formerly known as Arlington Cultural Council is now called the Grants Committee, part of the commission, is a subgroup of the Commission for Arts and Culture.
Res Committee was new to me.
[laughing]
All right, thank you.
Move approval?
Move approval for Mr. Kuro.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mahon. Further conversation, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
For appointment, Envision Arlington Standing Committee, Kelly Linema?
Linema.
Linema. I apologize.
That's okay. Everyone gets it wrong. Good evening.
Welcome.
Kimberly. Kimberly.
Oh, Kim. Thank you, Joe. You can tilt the microphone up a little bit.
Thank you.
So introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what got you excited about Envision Arlington.
Sure. My name is Kelly Linema. I'm the new Senior Planner for Department of Planning and Community Development. I'm excited about the work that Envision Arlington is doing and connecting to the larger community. As a planner, I have a strong interest in community engagement and I believe that they, that Envision Arlington has a very strong network in the town and has a particularly unique way of reaching out and connecting with local residents.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Heard. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome to the committee, welcome to the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Next up, Transportation Advisory Committee, Jeff Maxtoudis and Charles Giroux? Giroux?
Just a brief introduction. I think you all know, I'm Howard Muse's Chair of the TAC. I think you all know Jeff Maxtoudis, he's been on the committee for many, many years as a full voting member. In the last few years, he had to scale down his activities a little bit and became an associate member. And now he's ready to take on more work, so he wants to come back on as a full voting member. And Chuck is an associate member now. He's been with us for, I think, since last year, about a year. And this is a good opportunity to bring new blood into the committee and help us develop additional leadership as we move forward, so I'll let each one of them introduce themselves.
Thank you for the introduction.
I'm Chuck Giroux. I've lived in Arlington for about three years now and I got involved with the committee because transportation is a topic that I enjoy and it's, I'm excited to bring something to the community and contribute.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. I never really went away, but, yeah, I was on, Jeff Maxtoudis. I was a voting member for 12 years, then I had to do a few things around the house and was an associate member for two years, so I'm back to request being a full voting member at this point. So, I think I've been on the committee 14 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I actually have a question, but I don't know if I should ask it until after we vote these two and I don't want them to change their minds. And I don't know, Mr. Muse or Howard. I know the board has been cognizant of, I think maybe the past two, three years, initially it seemed like we were just sending everything taxway and were overtaxing TAC. And we've sort of set up a quasi-informal protocol of what goes to TAC and what doesn't go. I'm wondering, has that been working and is there any way that we can refine it? Do you feel that we've pulled back too much or is there a good balance or?
Yeah, I think...
So Chuck, don't let this scare you.
Well, we had a meeting last night, we started discussing this with Dan as a, you know, transportation planner, so he mentioned that also. So I think, I think it's going to work well. The TAC really works best on kind of bigger picture items, say like reviewing high school circulation and access, projects like that. Where we get bogged down a little bit is in smaller projects where people request stop signs and, you know, small regulations like that. So if, you know, if we can shift some of that away, I think that's going to make it a more effective, you know, committee to work like that.
Well, maybe, oh, yeah.
So it's, that was a perfectly timed question because we asked Dan Amstus, the new transportation planner, to work with TAC, develop criteria, bring them back before the board.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Decide, you know, what would go to Cory Reteau perhaps first, what could Dan do himself, or what would go to TAC, so that's...
So sort of like a matrix or a protocol? Okay. Thank you. I didn't know any of that.
Yeah, we appreciate the help. That's great, yeah.
Thank you.
Was that a motion?
Second.
Any further questions?
Chuck, you still want to do it?
I'll say that, so all of our committees are important and they all help the town and we all have, and we have great volunteers for all of them. I will say from a selectman's perspective, TAC is one of the most invaluable ones because I get to give you guys the hard problems and I really, really appreciate that, so.
Amen.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion by Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Kuro, I think. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Jeff.
Licenses and Approval, Common Vexular License, Bubble Nation. Welcome. Why don't you pull the microphone down a little bit, introduce yourself and tell us about your business. Will you pull the microphone down a little bit, introduce yourself and tell us about your business?
Yes, very pleasant to be here tonight, my name is Shan Shan Yu. So I'm owner of a bubble tea shop, the name is Bubble Nation. My husband and I started this concept two years back, and we started looking for places years ago, and we love Arlington, and I used to live here like a few years back. Very familiar to this area, and I wanna play, wanna, want to bring like fun stuffs, like a good flavor of teas to this town.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd? No, I'm sorry, you looked like you were ready, maybe I jumped the gun.
No, I, so, I didn't quite follow what Bubble Nation was, I can see the menu, but what's the Bubble Nation?
So Bubble Nation is the name of a bubble tea shop. Bubble tea is, is kind of drink is, is like a little bit new here, I noticed like, I'll try to explain the concept. So, it's, you guys probably familiar with the milk teas, tea with milks, but the traditional like bubble teas adding is topi, topioca?
tapioca?
Yes, tapioca, sorry. Like made bubbles instead of the milk tea and tastes very like smoothie and chewy. And then a lot of like people like it, and it's getting more and more popular in downtown Boston and some other towns. And I didn't find anything, I personally live in Burlington, and I didn't find any like bubble tea drinks or within like five miles around me. And then like my friends encouraged me to start a bubble tea business around this area, because they like my like cookies and bubble tea. And that's how we, my husband and I started it two years ago.
Well, it sounds good, I envisioned bubbles.
With a really big straw, because the bubbles are like...
Oh, yeah, right.
Because the bubbles are like little pearls.
I'm excited to try it.
Move approval and just two questions. One's just housekeeping. It's just a little nitpicker in me. For your hours of operation, you have M through S, and by that you mean Monday through Sunday?
Uh, yes.
On Monday through Sa, I'm not saying what your days, you plan seven days a week?
Um, yes, that's...
Okay.
Right.
I just wanna make sure, because S could be interpreted, you know, the other way. And then, where is, and I'm not asking for any proprietary secrets or confidentiality, but I understand the food's coming from an outside source, where, where's that from?
Sure, so our tea are imported from New York, one of a wholesale factory in New York. Their, their tea is originally from Taiwan and Hong Kong, that's where bubble tea is actually originally comes from. And we, we tried around and find that their products taste really good. And another, like, I'd say twenty or thirty percent of the drinks are not bubble tea, they're like smoothie shakes, that type of things. And that is from another wholesale things within Boston.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kuro? Did, I don't know if I understood correctly, did you say that this is not your first?
It is.
Oh, it is your first, it's your first, so you were working on it for three, four years, yeah?
Right, so I am digital marketing specialist, and I work for a technology company, we like software companies in Burlington, and my husband is like developers there as well. And we both found that our skill set can develop a new business, like I can do the marketing, and he will develop a website and apps, like online order or something like that, and I feel like it's very exciting, so that's why.
Sounds like a great team, good luck with it, thank you very much for investing in the town.
Yep.
All right, so we've got a motion from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Kuro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four zero vote. Welcome to Arlington, thank you very much.
Yep.
Next up, a license for Butternut Bakehouse, Suzanne Samad. Welcome.
Hi.
Could you tell us a little bit about yourself, and introduce yourself and tell us about your business?
Sure, my name is Susanna Samad. My business is called Butternut, and I plan to open Butternut Bakehouse on, in the former Bagels by Us location. I'm actually taking half of that space. My business, I've had my business for about two years. I have a licensed home kitchen, so I bake out of my home, and I've been selling at farmers markets for the past two years now. I do have some accounts with some, a couple of cafes where I do provide them with my pastries. So, this is my baby, I guess.
Excellent, thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
And I can't wait to try the lovely chocolate chip cookie. Of course, I've looked for anything chocolate on there, that's the first thing that jumped out. But you do have, I'm really excited by this, because I'm always looking for different ideas in terms of pastries, and not just, you know, for Sunday dinner for my kids and grandkids, but I see you're gonna offer a wide variety of catering services, and you really have some good platters or packages, so I'm excited, and I wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
And where'd you say you're going again? What location?
Bagels by Us.
Oh, right, right, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, any further questions? Seeing none, motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Kuro, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next up is the Citizens Open Forum, except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which this open forum was established. It should be noted that there's a three-minute time limit to present a concern or a request. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak under the Citizens Open Forum?
John Ward.
Mr. Warden. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, and thank you for providing this opportunity to make a rather important announcement. Last, last week, one week ago tonight, actually, I was in Boston at the annual meeting of Preservation Massachusetts to accept a certificate on behalf of the town, naming Arlington High School as one of the ten most endangered historic resources in Massachusetts for 2018. Here is a copy of the certificate.
Thank you.
The town's record in historic preservation and open space has been pretty good in the past forty years. Since, since the time of the National Bicentennial nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, when part of the town's observance included demolition of the Arlington's, the last of Arlington's four railroad stations, the hundred-year-old Arlington Center Station, to provide a few more parking places behind a bank that is long since defunct, by the way. We have created, we have created seven historic districts, passed a demolition delay bylaw, added open space including McLennan Park and Mount Gilboa, and dealt with public buildings such as this town hall, the library, the fire stations, and the Gibbs School with renovation rather than demolition and building anew. Thus, it came as a great shock when the high school building committee decided to destroy the two historic oldest buildings on the campus, and to add insult to injury, fill up the front lawn with new undistinguished buildings, obliterating the only substantial bit of open space on Massachusetts Avenue between Cambridge Common and Tower Park in Eastern Lexington. Not only is this plan an environmental disaster, but it is, the excessive cost would be a terrible burden on Arlington's already high-pressed taxpayers. An estimate of eight hundred twenty-seven dollars per year for thirty years on an average home. I urge you, in your position as the town's leaders, to persuade the building committee to get Arlington High School off the endangered list and to make it a better plan to serve our students and our taxpayers, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Is there anybody else here who wishes to speak under Citizens Open Forum? Seeing none, declaring Citizens Open Forum is closed. Traffic rules and orders and other business, request for fifth street, on-street overnight parking on thirty forty Beacon Street, John L. Worthy III. I'm not seeing anyone coming up, we have a recommendation, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, no, no action per the documents provided by APD and others.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero, it is denied. For approval, Transportation Advisory Committee recommendations. Hello, welcome. Why don't you introduce yourself and...
Scott Smith, a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Welcome.
Good to be here, just popped up from the BRT firm.
Yeah.
First item, first is the Minuteman Bike Way and Water Street intersection. First, clarify, we're not advising any changes to the traffic orders, any actions are for DPW and maybe our Waze partnership. So just make that clear, this is really for information. So, so if you go down Water Street and near the Minuteman Bike Way crossing, there's this little alley that runs towards Winslow Towers. And, and one of the residents in that area said, hey, this is a mess. So last, late last spring, we took a look out there, observed conditions. It is a complicated little intersection, and what surprised us was the amount of apparently cut-through traffic using that alley, which isn't really, you know, it's fifteen feet wide, two-way. So you have some, some very basic counts below that we did in a few minutes. And in fact, during our observation, we saw a near miss between two motorists, even though overall in the crash statistics, it's not particularly bad overall. I think mainly because the speeds are low. So, recommendations are, maybe time for another traffic count on Water Street, it was last done in twenty-ten, just see what's happening to patterns there as, you know, as cut-through patterns change. Work with Google and Waze, let them know the alley's privately owned, and they should not be routing traffic up what's essentially a driveway. And then, we did see that there is no warning sign for the approach to the Minuteman Bike Way going on Water Street, southbound towards Mass Ave. And, you know, the one possible risk of serious crashes might be motorists coming up from Russell Street and then going at fairly high speed down water. Could, so, some warning that this is a tricky situation coming up, so those are the immediate actions. And we have another set of actions for consideration, we were considering a four-way stop, I wasn't sure that would be particularly effective. And other actions which require much more consideration before implementing them. So, any questions?
Of course, I'm gonna go to future actions, so I'll just put my two cents in on that, because, I mean, I have seen cars going in both directions go down that alley, and sometimes if they're both small enough, it works, and sometimes if not, someone has to back up, and, you know, we have the senior housing there, and then we have people who are about the bike path, it's like a nightmare, so... When you say, because two of the actions that you're considering in the future, and there could be more on top of that, making Russell a one-way or putting traffic restrictions, including a stop bar, I was just wondering, and you'll discuss this at the TAC meeting in the future, those measures and or anything else, I don't know if where it's an alley, I mean, the stop bar kinda gets me there, if it's, if it's something we can declare, and I don't know that signage would work to say, you know, no vehicular traffic, emergency vehicles only, something, but it just, it blows my mind when I see people go down there, and I'm just like, and... And the Russell, I say, because, you know, I go down that area a lot, and I do see, and I can tell, because most people, you know, have it on their GPS and they're looking at it, and some are holding it up, and I can see them make that, like fish finding the quickest way upstream, and I'm like, it is Waze, so...
Well, though, though if the parcel map on GIS, in town GIS is to be believed, we don't own, the town does not own that alley, it's private.
Oh, well, you, oh, okay.
Yeah, so, that's another complication.
Okay, okay.
Do we know who owns it?
I would say...
We have it in our notes, but...
I would get maybe Housing Authority, so maybe some, but anyways, yeah.
Just a question, is it a no left turn from Mass Ave onto Water Street? Or is it just a no left turn from Water?
The restriction is only from Water Street, and that was to protect the crosswalk on Mass Ave.
The traffic, the cut-through traffic, is it people going from Mass Ave to Mystic Street, or Mystic Street to Mass Ave, or both?
Mystic Street to Mass Ave, like...
So what if we ask the Housing Authority just for permission to post there, that it, because it says emergency through traffic only? Is that something, I mean, with their permission, if we put that up, then that makes the case easier, I think, with Waze. Is that, Scott, you have an...
It could, it could be, if, I'm not sure they're the owner, I have to, we'd have to check our notes on who the actual owner is before, and then approach that entity.
If it's privately owned, wouldn't whoever owns it be able to call Waze and say, stop directing people over my property?
You can, but I, it has been my experience that once you put a sign up, Waze pays more attention to it. Because, like, it's much easier to just call up Waze and be like, stop, stop standing on my lawn, and Waze is like, look, everyone doesn't want to, but when you put up a sign that says, this is forbidden, then Waze says, okay, we're gonna follow the sign.
They have, yeah, that's like anything. You can only go down if Chairman Dunn says, that's...
So who...
Nobody yet. Move approval?
Move motion?
Second.
Second, is there further discussion, and this is on the Water Street, and so some of this referring to the town manager? The parts that are, the DPW, is that appropriate? And are some, some of these follow-ups, we're leaving with you, or you want us to, how do you want us to do that?
I think for, I think for expediency is to the town manager and DPW, since DPW is represented at TAC, and then, I think, then we can follow up that way.
Okay. So we got a motion from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Kuro, any further discussion on the Water Street issue? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. All right, next up is school zones. Oh, sorry, one moment.
Just because I brought it up, it looks as though it's owned by the owner of the building up in the corner of Uncle Sam Park, you know, the building that has Goslin Law and Leonie Law and Coldwell Banker. I think it's the same.
That would make sense.
They do have spot, Coldwell Banker has spots.
Yeah, so that...
Has a need parking spaces on the side there.
So we can still approach that landowner, but...
Give it a go.
Thank you. Howard Muse again, chairman of the TAC. The next item here has to do with establishment of school zones. Back in two thousand and seven, the TAC worked with the town, particularly Arlington Police Department, to set up school zones. We have them at all the public elementary schools, but we don't have them at Odison, St. Agnes, or the Gibbs School. So this would be to take formal action to establish those school zones. Also, we've noted that the Bracket School needs some modifications to the signage, I think to bring it up to date with current standards. I will point out that the Gibbs School has already had all of its signage and markings put in, that was done so it would be ready for the opening of the school. But we do need formal designation of a school zone. And attached to the document, and these are for illustration, they're not for you to particularly approve all this signage and the placement of the signs and so forth, the manual on uniform traffic control devices with, which is a national standard for traffic control, and the Massachusetts amendments to those lay out all the requirements for where signs have to be and what the sign should be and so forth. So the Arlington Police Department and the DPW work together to make sure everything's put in where it's appropriate. So, these just illustrative of sort of detail that we get into to try to see what needs to be done. We have not done this yet for the St. Agnes School, so that would be something that we, we would follow up. It'd probably be mostly the Police Department and DPW, but to the extent that they want us involved, we're more than willing to help. Any questions?
So on, on St. Agnes, I'm curious, is that gonna probably even impact and put a school zone on Mass Ave, for instance, right?
For St. Agnes?
Yeah.
I don't know whether it would go that far, the, is a set limit of the school zone from, I believe, I'm not sure whether it's the edge of the building or the edge of the property. And it's something like three hundred feet, so I don't know that it would reach Mass Ave for the St. Agnes School.
AC probably would, but I'm not too, yeah, because they're... Move approval?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, discussion vote, CDBG Subcommittee Expansion, Mr. Chaplaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll just give this a brief introduction and then ask Julie Wayman to describe it in a little further detail, but Julie approached Jenny Raitt and I just a little while ago, about a month ago, asking if we would consider bringing before the board this idea of expanding the CDBG Subcommittee. if we would consider bringing before the board this idea of expanding the CDBG Subcommittee. I think, we think the CDBG Subcommittee does great work. With Julie and Jenny's help, I think we've started to do better work, as Mr. Dunn sat through last year with the criteria and the rating system that we used for the applicants. But Julie is asking that we give further consideration to expanding and including residents on the Subcommittee, which will both help our community engagement as well as help our compliance with federal regulations around HUD funding. So perhaps I said everything Julie was gonna say, but I think Julie might wanna describe it a little more. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself for the millions at home.
Sure. I'm Julie Wayman, the Community Development Block Grant Administrator. So as Adam said, I'm here tonight to ask you to consider expansion of the CDBG Subcommittee. So as you know, the Subcommittee currently consists of two select board members, our town manager, Jenny Raitt, our Director of Planning and Community Development, and myself, the CDBG Administrator. So to provide greater representation for the people who are served through our Community Development Block Grant, I am asking that we might consider adding three residents, ideally who make a low to moderate income, to our CDBG Subcommittee. This would help, as Adam said, also to fulfill some of HUD's requirements in increasing citizen participation. So were we to add the residents, we are envisioning that they would review applications and help with funding decisions, attend some of our Community Development Week events, and also help with broader community engagement, especially around our five-year consolidated plan. That is going to outline our funding goals for 2020 to 2025, and we'll need some increased community engagement around that effort. So what we're proposing is not unique. A number of communities do something similar, specifically Cambridge, Brookline, and Newton, for a few examples. So obviously conditional upon your approval, we're looking to post this opening soon, prior to the next CDBG funding cycle. So thank you for your consideration.
You may have said this, and I missed it, so I apologize. Who's the appointing authority, and what is the process to, you know, seek out members, the three members? So who has the final appointing authority? Is it the select board, is it something else?
Yeah, I think we were envisioning either the town manager or the select board, asking people to, through a posting, asking people to submit, you know, resumes and a letter of interest, and then either the town manager or the select board for final approval.
So we didn't actually specify it in the recommendation, but I would, I would, I guess, if I was going to recommend, I would say, allow us to screen and then make a recommendation to the board, as with many other boards and commissions.
So, yeah, I just, because it wasn't in there, I just wanted, and then I just have one other side question, but I don't know if I should continue?
All right, keep going.
Since you're the CDBG Administrator, one of the things several years ago that, when Mr. Sullivan was town manager, that I had asked for as a courtesy...
Yeah.
Was that there be a approximate halfway six-month report on CDBG, in terms of that. And it's pretty much been done, but I'm wondering, has that been codified, formally memorialized? And it may not be the six-month mark, it may be the nine-month mark. Is that something you, with Jenny and the town manager, could kinda look at and evaluate, and get it somewhere so that it's like on a tickler-file system? And the big thing was, you know, every now and then you find someone that, you know, for some reason didn't use the money, and it may only seem like four or six thousand, but it could help something else. But am I saying, or is that like, it doesn't seem like that's an official process to me? So since she was here, I was kinda taking advantage.
Yeah, I feel, I think we do that lumped in with the same evening, where we accept applications, talk about the upcoming year, and give a brief status report on the current year. But that's a lot of CDBG in one night, so maybe we can carve that out.
Yeah.
Do the status report at a different meeting, so that it's more focused.
So that, you know, in a time that you think is appropriate?
Yeah.
You may say, "Mahon, you said six months, but you really want it at ten," or something like that.
Yeah, so just as you're both saying, as Adam said, it currently does happen all on that same night in March, in the spring, prior to town meeting. But it is all happening at once, so maybe it is too much to hear about how the year is going and talk about the next funding year. So we could certainly do it in, I mean, I guess, coming up, soon. But we could do that on two separate nights, if that would be better.
And if not this year, next year, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, we, I think our CDBG sub recipients expect to give a mid-year report, which they've been doing, so they would still continue to do that. And I can certainly come on a night separate from when we're making recommendations, if that would be a little bit better.
Is that okay? Thank you. Move approval?
Second.
With the appointing authority to be the town manager subject to the approval, however we do all the other things, of the select board.
So a motion by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Kira, anybody else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay. Who wants to talk about the warrant? I'm looking at the dates. Sorry, Mrs. Mahon?
I'd like to make a motion that the Arlington Select Board opened the warrant for the annual town meeting, which will take place on Monday, April 22, 2019, at 8:00 PM at the Arlington Town Hall. The warrant for the annual town meeting will open on Tuesday, December 4, 2018, at 8:00 AM, and will remain open until 12:00 noon on Friday, January 25, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor, or any discussion?
I just wanna say that, and I think perhaps it was Mr. Ward, and many years ago, when I first came on the board, the annual town warrant was open a week or so, and he had requested three to four weeks. The board really took that one step further, opening it as soon as we could, the beginning of December, and closing it very late in January. So we've certainly surpassed that, and I think that's a good protocol that we adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did we just set the date for election, too, at the same time?
It's not on the...
Town election?
Oh.
I think, I think it's the seventh.
Yeah, because it's already, it's set separately.
Yeah, I think it's April 7.
All right. All right. Next up, discussion votes, board and town manager goals. Mr. Chaplaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've provided for the board an updated goals document. Apologize, it's a little bit later than it has been in past years, but I think I've captured both the deletion of goals, addition of goals, and revision of goals that we talked about at our goal-setting session back in the summer. The only further suggestion I have that I did not incorporate into the document, because it wasn't discussed at that meeting, but I would suggest the board consider, is that we add a goal specific to all of the discussions that we've been having regarding National Grid and DPU and the challenges we're having there. I think since that goal-setting session, probably actually very shortly after the goal-setting sessions, when the lockouts began and our discussions started in that regard. So I think adding a goal that would talk about advocating with both the DPU and the National Grid to return to normal course of business, or something along those lines, would be an appropriate goal addition.
Would you put that under long-range community planning? Would you put it under public communication, customer service, or somewhere else? Or you can let us know where you put it?
You know, so we...
I'm not saying it should go in either.
We have under long-range financial strategic planning and sustainability, a deliverable that says priorities to include working with utility companies to explore system upgrades and better coordination amongst varying utilities, specifically focused on better coordination between utility work and town paving projects, gas leak repair, and double pole removal. Perhaps I could expand upon that one, or add just another deliverable within that, since we're talking about utilities and coordination right there? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and could I advocate, unless my colleagues think differently, that it's a separate deliverable?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, no, I think it's, yeah, the deliverable would get too Frankenstein-ish if I added too much more in there, so I think standalone would be better.
And that's a joint goal?
I think so.
Or is it just a...
I think it's a joint goal, yeah.
A move approval?
Actually, I wanna, I wanna crack at adding one, actually. So in, so this one's definitely very recent, but I think it's still, depending on how my colleagues think about it. I feel it's about early voting, and I think that we should take on ourselves, I don't think it's town manager, I think it's just us, and I think it fits under public communications and customer service, that the board, like, fully embraces early voting and will work towards a goal of broader adoption and ease of use for the 2020 election.
Definitely.
Because I feel like, if I had thought, I feel like if I had thought about that earlier this year, I would have done a lot more. And frankly, like, the schedule got done, and like, everything got set, and I was like, oh, we didn't do Saturday, we didn't do...
Well, that's my question, because people said, what happened to Saturday, or this or that? Who's the be-all, end-all for that decision? Who's the decision-maker?
I think that, rather than answer that question, I want, I think we, I think we're gonna make the goal, and then we're gonna tell everybody, and then, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Mrs. Kavalka.
I've already set it up for 2020, that we will have it on a Saturday, and we've booked the town hall off limits for eleven days.
So I think that's great, and I want us to...
Also, and I think it's gonna be the primary, too.
Yeah.
So I booked it for both, so that Patsy knows there's no wedding, nothing for the September and November.
That's good, that's great, and I want, and I would thank you very much for doing that, and I think that's, that's maybe like half the battle, because there's another battle that's about the publication of it, and getting, like, doing some more education about it. And I think that a lot of this actually belongs to the town clerk, and, but that doesn't mean that we, the board, the select board can't tell the town clerk what it thinks about how the elections should run, and that's the direction that I'm going right now.
Well, I've booked the two Saturdays from nine to five, and the Saturdays nine to five, not the twelve.
But it's still a facilitation goal, because I know we have other...
Yeah, exactly. I'm not trying to set the exact times right now, I'm just saying, we're endorsing it, we're supporting it, and we're setting it as a goal that it's gonna run really well in 2020.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I note that, I'll note that we do have a goal in here, work to develop a memorandum of agreement with the town clerk's office and the board of registrars regarding the management and administration of elections. Did you want to just expand upon that?
That is an excellent point, Mr. Kira. Where was that one again?
It's the very last one.
Under public communications and customer services.
Oh, no, under public communications, customer service. And that is a goal only of the board.
But could I advocate for, maybe right above or under that, have this, a second deliverable? Because I see it as having, that goal I see as continuing on and being there, but this seems like we're gonna do it, I mean, but however you decide.
I think, I think you're, I think you're having two different items about, is that okay?
I have no problem.
Okay.
Just noting that we had the...
And that's coming on us, not on town manager.
Of course, the ongoing motion that Mr. Chaplaine, the town manager, is keeping track of all of this, and it's gonna, because I haven't really written down much, I just realized that, okay.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? That's it.
So how does the board feel about approving the goals as they are, so we, for posting purposes? And I can bring back some specific language on these two goals, is that...
Sure.
Makes sense? I mean, just to be...
I think just notify us, and then we can, yeah, I think the substance of it is, it feels very subtle to me.
Good, thank you.
I need a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahon. Second, move by Mrs. Mahon, and second by Mr. Kira. I just, before we actually vote, I just want to talk about, I said it before, like, I think this is a really valuable process, and I'm really glad that we do it. And I think that these, obviously, so many of our meetings are focused on, you know, tasks and licenses and approvals and stuff like that. This is a really good cycle for us to, you know, lift up out of the detail and talk about vision and plans and goals, and I feel, and it's, I think it's really a powerful tool that then helps us make decisions through the whole year. So I'm really glad that we spend the time on this.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
Is this the process that we had the discussion of perhaps doing it on a Thursday afternoon versus a Saturday morning?
Yes, yeah, didn't we, we do that this year?
Yeah, we didn't, we avoided a Saturday this year, we didn't do, so it was an evening, but it wasn't a...
I mean, that's, for me, that's, Saturday mornings are really, yeah, so, so that's sort of an informal process.
That it get, you wanna...
That it not be Saturday mornings.
Well, someone else is...
Unless we have to.
Somebody else is gonna be chair.
Okay.
So, so somebody, that chair gets to set that agenda, I think.
To any future chairs, I would know.
Yeah. All right, motion by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Kira. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Final votes and comments. We have four up. Mr. Hyam, do you have comments, or should we just go from the words?
I do have some great comments, Mr. Chum.
Please.
So the first comment I'll make is that, did you catch, Mel Golds, I was here to speak to any questions substantively about Article Four, if you have them?
Your microphone is, yeah.
My first comment is that Mel is here to talk about any substantive questions that you might have with respect to Article Four. There is a, there is a typo within the language, it should be a maximum total of nine commissioners, which Mel caught, I'm grateful for that. With respect to the town treasurer submitted article with respect to certain personnel, the one piece that I want to highlight is that, for the most part, this was adopted in the format and the, with the scope of changes that Mr. Carmen proposed. There was one modification that I think is important for the board to consider. The, Mr. Carmen's proposal essentially had the treasurer appointed by the finance director, who is, of course, gonna be an appointee of the town manager. After discussing with the town manager and really considering whether there's any precedent for that type of structure, for someone who reports to the town manager to be the appointing authority for another position, I opted to change that to make it coordinated with the, with the finance director, because otherwise, it's a very unusual setup. I did talk with Mr. Carmen about that, he has no objections to that change. But otherwise, I'd leave it open to the board if you have any questions or concerns, or you'd like to make any adjustments to the votes of the comment.
Do you want to handle them in order?
Over-approve? Oh, yeah, well, sorry, you want to do each one, three?
Yeah, I guess, I have one minor change, I think, I want to try to make to the comment of the last one. All right, article, yeah, let's do it in order. Any comments or discussion on Article Three?
Move approval?
Second.
Doug, I thought your phrasing about the relationship with the finance committee was very well done.
Thank you.
Motion by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Kira, all those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Bylaw amendment, LBGQI, a plus rainbow commission membership. We've got some proposed language and a comment. Any discussion? Questions?
Move approval?
Second.
Move by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Kira, Melio Good. Any further? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article, thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
Article Four, Treasury and Collections Division. So we've got a bunch of changes with the one, call it substantive difference that...
Protection Five, Article...
Thank you. How am I, oh, because I'm in sections four of the...
Right, right, right. Bylaw amendment, certain personnel.
Thank you very much, it is Article Five. So wait, we've got one...
It's the bylaw language, it's getting confused with the...
Yeah, I'm just making sure. So I didn't, now that I've got here, just so you, Doug, get this, so Article Five, bylaw amendment, certain personnel, it says voted, Title I, Article Four, Treasury, then we have Article Four, Treasury, Collections Divisions, and then it says Section One Duty, then it says Article Four, Treasury, Department of Collections Division, Section One Duty. That repetition is right? I forgot to, I didn't even notice it until right now.
Yeah, I'm, I don't have it on mine, so I'm not sure what happened there, but I'll make sure that it's consistent.
Thank you.
Let me see, let's see.
It may be that that's the original language, it just doesn't make sense when it's extracted, and I hadn't, I didn't even catch it.
It's not in Doug's Word version of it, so maybe it could have been...
Yeah, sometimes when you print PDFs, PDFs do not render...
Yeah, perfectly.
Yeah. I could talk to you about standards in PDFs, if we could, for a while, if you'd like.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Mahon?
Oh my gosh, I just, where we're striking near the end, I'm trying to find it, where it talks about approval by, it says Board of Selectment, Select Board for borrowing, where all that has been struck out, is that because, A, it's stated somewhere earlier, or B, that that process is being struck out?
I think, uh, Ms. Mahan, that the, that it's being struck because the overall purpose of the article was to eliminate those provisions which were created and maintained to have the treasurer's office serve as some sort of independent check and balance and reporting authority. I think that most of this type of information is, under Mr. Carmen's proposal, is supposed to be enveloped into the finance director's sort of purview so that there'll be a coordinated response. I think that's why all these specific pieces were eliminated because they would be, you know, the town manager's reports directly to the select board and the treasurer will be part of that integrated finance team reporting to the town manager. Is that some, I mean, that was my understanding of the purpose of these deletions.
I guess case in point, and I certainly look forward to not having to sign my name 71 times, but, um, does that mean the process we went through here tonight would no longer exist?
No.
No, I don't think so.
No, you'd still be required for, you know, any sort of legal document to get your approval before you would, you know, enter into some sort of bonding situation like that. Anything that would set, a lot of those processes are sort of set forth by state law. There's a little bit of redundancy in the bylaw with respect to some provisions, but-
I guess, I guess I'll leave it to you all. It's just where I see the language says upon, talking about borrowing and everything and it says upon, you know where I'm getting, talking about?
That, that is specific to a time when the town was considering borrowing for its pension funding? So that language being struck out is specific to the pension funding, not borrowing in general?
Just a pension, not a, overall bar, whether it's but, bands, bonds, whatever.
No, yeah.
If it's pension, if it's pension bands or bonds, we're not involved.
I, I think we're just saying that that's not something we're considering anymore. Something like happened tonight will remain in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on Article Five?
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Kira. Second by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Article Six, uh, just, Doug, can we add like one sentence to the comment maybe that says, uh, the board is seeking nominee or appointees with experience in administering fund, scholarship funds, or administering and, um, what's the word?
Ourselves.
Judging?
Oh, yeah. Evaluating.
Evaluating, yeah. Because I think that was, that was one of the clear point that came from Dean was that one of the things he didn't feel like he had was experience in administering, like, there were, and I, I think if we put it in there, it'll make the various appointing authorities think about who, who they are appointing in that light. Joe?
I think that the comment actually says, it says, um, should be considered by a formal body with members with some experience in fundraising and scholarship grant distribution.
How did I miss that?
It's the next to the last sentence.
You're absolutely right. How did I miss that? Because I was looking at-
It was quick work, Doug.
Yeah.
And because I don't think Mr. Greeley is gonna be here, why do I have in my head that there was something Kevin might have wanted to say about this, or I had it in my head that he wanted us to, or am I just not remembering correctly? I just want to make sure, was there something that he wanted to say if he was here? No one has that? Okay, that's fine.
I reviewed, I, Mrs. Mahan, I did review the, the tape of this because it was a lengthy discussion and I think everybody made, you know, comments. I tried to distill it down, but I can take one more pass at it and, you know, make sure that there's nothing critical that, that Kevin wanted inserted in.
Yeah, if you could just touch base with him. For some reason, I thought, when I was talking to him, he said, make sure when the bill fer, and I can't remember the rest of the sentence. Okay, sorry.
All right. Uh, is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Move by Mr. Kira, second by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Correspondence received.
Move receipt? Mr. Chairman, how would you like to dispense of where it goes?
Yeah, do we want to, the parking implementation subgroup? Let's refer to them for their evaluation.
I, I think that is, that's fine. I would say in immediate proof of the value of the goal setting, one of the goals the board set was to pursue a parking study in East Arlington. And I think prior to making any decisions about 15-minute or different type of parking regulations, pursuing that parking study would be the appropriate course of action.
Okay. Sounds good. I think that, and this would be a wonderful thing for them to have in hand when they do that.
Yes.
Okay.
So will the town manager communicate?
Yeah, so I, I think referred to Pig C, I'll communicate back with the petition. Gather, I actually see him in East Arlington pretty often, so it'd be easy communication.
Excellent. Mr. Kira?
I just have a, maybe a nitpicky question though on that, because my understanding was that parking implementation governor's committee was specifically around the parking district in the center. It's our parking s- subcommittee, which I, I don't know how often it's been called up since, since we've had so much activity around the center, but I, I think they are separate entities, are they not?
I actually don't remember.
The parking implementa, the parking subcommittee has not met since the parking implementation and governance committee was formed. I think the charge for the Pig C is specific to Arlington Center. In practice, the Pig C has-
So the stakeholders, yeah.
We, we started to expand, you know, at least, you know, in terms of ADA parking spaces and advising in that regard, we've started to expand the purview. I mean, perhaps we bring back an updated charge for the board's consideration.
Yeah, that might make sense. I'm fine to like, referring it, but the stakeholders that were specifically drawn-
You'd have different business stakeholders.
Center businesses, center institutions.
Residents, yeah.
That's true.
Good point. Okay.
So either we form a parallel committee that reflects this particular parking study or we reboot the-
I, I, or I, or update the charge for the, for the parking implementation. I think that makes more sense.
We have a, the same committee can handle.
Yeah, they can handle, yeah, definitely.
Because the main thing that the PIGC used to deal with was the meters, which are now in, so.
But are you saying, if I may?
I wouldn't, I don't think we'd need a second committee.
Yeah.
But in terms of the centralized area stakeholders, it would, those people would change-
We'd probably have to update the charge in the membership or expand the membership or something.
That sounds like a, a good thing for us to do.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay. All right, so let's do it, but, let's do it and give ourselves-
Some time to think about it, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion on?
Move receipt?
Move receipt from Mrs. Mahan.
And the directions of-
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. New business, Mrs. Karpal.
I don't have any, thank you.
Mr. Hyam? I just want to invite folks who are interested in submitting warrant articles to follow the process whereby they give myself and the town the heads up so that we can try to help make sure that warrant articles are within the scope of the town's authorities and also that their article is in the best possible format for town meeting. Thank you.
Just a few pieces. One, you heard Ellie or someone mention earlier, the BRT wrap-up forum is probably still going on downstairs right now. Uh, so we're, we have data, we're still collecting data, the T is still gonna be giving the town more data, or data. We're hearing feedback tonight and then hopefully within the next month or two, we'll be back before the board about what our recommendations will be for some type of implementation, permanent implementation or not. Anecdotally, an initial data points to a successful pilot. I'm not sure what you've heard in the community, but generally it seems to be a pretty positive, positive reaction to the pilots. That was, uh, was a, was a good month. I want to mention the, we had a very successful town meeting member session at the high school where town meeting members were invited for a tour of the high school, then an information session, and then a Q and A session about the high school project. I think we counted about 90 or 95 town meeting members, so a pretty good percentage of town meeting members, as well as additional members of the public showed up. So that was a very good session. Good questions, good back and forth. I think a lot of support amongst, amongst that membership of the community, that part of the community for doing the project and a lot of interest in finding a way to compromise and get through some of the, some of the challenges that we're, that, that we're facing as a, as a committee.
Can I ask, oh, you first.
Did you, so it was 90 town meeting members plus others?
I think it was about 110 people there in total.
Oh, wow, okay, good to know. Thank you.
Um, just on that item, just because I've had so many people, and I'm not saying tonight was in any case in point that I'm citing right now, but has there been some verbiage, some publication? Because people have come up to me and said, you know, save the historic lawn, save the historic columns. Neither one of those are, I mean, the historical part of, of the high school is what I call where the pit was and column building, which is, um, we somehow clarified that, or is the lawn historic and are the columns historic, which I don't think they are?
So I'm not familiar with any historic status for the lawn. Town council and I have been working with our local historic commission who have started to take steps to designate the Fusco House and the Column House as historic buildings. I don't believe they've taken the final vote in that regard. The matter mentioned by Mr. Warden earlier is an independent nonprofit agency that has no legal powers or abilities over, over the town. I don't know, do you want to add anything?
I just want to add one thing. So the historic commission, not the historic district commission, the historic commission is the body that's vested with designating properties as historically or architecturally significant. They have been undergoing a process, independent of the high school building committee, of sort of doing an inventory of what is considered historic and architecturally significant in the town. It dates back to what you'll recall from last town meeting. They have started the process of designating the high school. It was not previously designated as a historic or architecturally significant building. And you've probably read, you know, that there's some debate about that. What it means, if they, if they ultimately classify it as historically and architecturally significant, is that it's subject to demolition delay. It does not mean that the building can't be demolished. It means that there has to be a hearing about whether or not the building should be subject to preferential preservation and their only authority is to delay the demolition by up to a year. I would say that the chair of that commission wanted to make it known that, from their perspective, this is not the first time that a town building has been subject to either demolition or significant modification that has come before them and that they're willing to, you know, certainly consider what the town's long-term plans are. But I just want the public to understand that it does not mean that the, the building will never be demolished or that it can't be. It's, at most, it means that the project could be delayed. It's a little bit unusual in the municipal context because usually we're talking about a private home where, you know, they try to find another buyer, they try to find something that can be done within a year's time. It's obviously a lot less likely that something would happen to the high school within a year time, within a year's time because of, of a delay. Thank you for indulging in that.
And, and I'll leave it to the town manager, because I've had people run the whole gamut of, you know, gotta stay, save that historic, you know, the auditorium, it's historical. You have to save, save the columns in front, it's historical. And by, you know, just from my memory, first high school was over there, the second high school was that brick building on the left, which is Column Fusco. That's truly the only thing that's, whatever it's supposed to be, 99 years or more. And I think when the building committee deems it appropriate, kind of get that message out there because, um, for some reason, I see some people coalescing around saving that entire property because it's all historical. Not saying for some reason that's how it flushes out, but that's not the case. It's really just what I call, I split it up into three parcels. It's really just one parcel on the left that nobody's asking me to save that part. A couple of people, they're like, you can tear down that ugly brick, brick building on the end. I'm like, well, that's the true historical part of the high school. That's the second Arlington High School, um, the first one being over here where the senior center was. So I just wanted to pass that message through the town manager because I think that might really clarify that, you know, when people understand what it is, um, because a lot of them, when they're talking about it, and I tell them, no, the one part, you say knock that thing down, that's the only historical piece. So, thank you, I jumped in on his new business.
No, that's, that's fine. That was, that was a good clarification. The only other two things I'll add is internally, the budget process is underway, working towards the January 15 budget submission deadline, along with the long-range planning committee continuing to work and I think will likely be back here before the board, probably before the end of the calendar year with further updates so that the board will go into the new year with a, you know, clearer and clearer understanding of what's to be considered next year. And the last thing I'll share is, emailed the board earlier today, but I'll be attending the Mass Managers Conference in Amherst on Thursday and Friday. And the topic, the, the seminar is on running a board retreat for setting goal sessions. So I might be able to come back with an opportunity for, you know, a weekend getaway for the board to go set goals sometime in the future, so we'll see.
Uh, hello? Wait a minute, when did we renew this conference?
That's tongue in cheek, that's half tongue in cheek. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Jim Feeney better be here. Diane?
Uh, just, a few quick items. Just mentioning this to the chairman, um, there's a possibility I won't be at the special town meeting on December 5th. Once again, the Arlington Pop Warner Cheerleaders, the B squad, who last year went all the way to Nationals, came in first. They seem to, knock on wood, been, they are recreating their run again this year, first place in league, state, Eastern Mass Regionals. And they, we're going down to Disney December 2nd to December 5th, um, and truly just happy to go there. But once again, they're a really good, clean team, but I don't want to jinx them. So we wish them good luck and, and when they come back, do something appropriate. The second thing is, and this is what I was gonna bring in new business, but I hadn't spoken to Marie and Kevin, who of course said it's a no-brainer and I'm kind of embarrassed, I never thought of it sooner. I was approached by a couple of parents from the Arlington Catholic High School Cheerleading Squad and they said, it's okay if we can't, we can't, we know we're Arlington, we're AC, but you know, our, our team would really like to participate in Town Day. And I said, of course. And I was embarrassed that I had never thought of that. But Arlington High School and Arlington Catholic High School, we've really fostered an, an environment that, you know, we go to diff, we were at the same competition, different divisions, we cheer for each other, we have some unity bonding, because we do have two high schools in Arlington, so that's just a, a no-brainer. But like I said, I'm embarrassed, I didn't think of it sooner. I can't wait to go home and read Governing, October 2018. I see, uh, former Wisconsin Governor Scott Walker's on there and I, I, I can't wait. I, I must admit I haven't read it yet, but it must be very interesting and I wish him a very long, healthy, prosperous retirement out there in Wisconsin. And, um, spoke with the chairman about coordinating, um, the National Grid, DPU, um, agenda item and kind of shooting for the next business meeting in December, if that's something that's doable, so, thank you.
Apparently I don't get to read the same issue of the government.
Give this to Mahan, she'll get it.
Jerry Brown.
I'm reading that, are you kidding me?
He's also retiring. Is he?
Yep.
I just want to say that I did participate in early voting for the first time this year. I just want to thank all the election workers. I, I didn't know what to expect, but I went in, it was very easy. I will recommend that the town order about a million I Voted stickers to have around, just to put that whole controversy to bed, so everyone that gets to vote, I only think it's an I Voted sticker, no matter how early. And then I also would like to thank the Human Rights Commission. I attended the vigil in response to the synagogue shooting. It's unfortunate that these, that it seems that the Human Rights Commission is the most active commission in Arlington because of everything that they have to respond to, but it also is, it's nice to go to events and see how the town and the residents respond quickly and in strong numbers to such occasions. And thank Joe for representing us and he spoke and he spoke very well.
Thank you. I'll just say, I, I got a picture of a bridge.
No, it's, it's governing. Didn't you get governing?
I didn't get Governing, I got Metro B T C News. It's all right, it's all right, it'll be interesting.
I understand, well, I'll, I'll leave it back in the office, I really do read this one and this one.
No new business.
Uh, some really quick ones. So you're talking about you going to the goal setting, so I went to, uh, a year ago, December, at the Selectmans', um, the M M A Selectmans' Forum. Yeah, uh, I was a panelist, actually, I was the only panelist, talking about goal setting. And the guy who interviewed me, like, the guy was, is an Arlington resident, and he subsequently introduced me to the person who is now my boss. So like, I got introduced to Crew and Hydro through an M S A meeting. How bizarre is that? People say, Dan, how'd you find this job? And I'm like, well, sit down.
It was cynical, in the rolling sense.
All right, um, real, real new business. Uh, thank you for, uh, to, uh, all the workers who did, for the voting. Um, both the, you know, the people who are the clerks, the wardens, the, the people in the Selectman's Office, and the people in the town clerk's office. Uh, number three, saw a bunch of people out at, with Veterans Day Parade on Sunday. Um, it was a nice event, I really enjoyed the keynote speaker, um, who was a girl who wrote a story about her grandfather, or great-grandfather, it wasn't totally clear to me, and his experience in World War Two, and it was excellent.
It was.
I really, really enjoyed it. And last but not least, I, I got a call from the elder Mr. Hurd about the, uh, the Select Board awards. And they've made really good progress on, like, the, we can call it complete, which is like rewriting some of the descriptions to make them unique and distinguished, and, uh, creating one for Margaret Spangler, and there, there's a lot of good work they did. We, they did not get the response that they were looking for, for, um, nominees, so we're gonna postpone. And I, I told, uh, Jack that whatever date they recommend for doing it, I'm happy to support. But I also suggested to him that perhaps this spring, when people are thinking about elections, they're a little bit maybe more municipally-minded, we may get a little bit more. So I think we, we may have to beat the bushes a little bit more for nominees on the next one. Uh, that was my last item.
Move adjourned?
Second.
Next scheduled meeting of the Select Board is November twenty-sixth. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.